Let's see, make sure. Okay. I can hear now that we're on. All right, great. Sorry, thank you for bearing with us, everyone. We'll go ahead and reconvene. We were on item three, election of officers with the chair. We had closed the nomination. Before I close the nominations, is there any other nominations for chair? Okay, so, clerk please, please call the vote.
We are nominating Commissioner Klein as chair. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Fortney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot?
Yes.
Commissioner Laban? Commissioner Rudin? Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll now open the nominations for vice chair of the commission. Commissioner Wilkerson?
I'd like to nominate Michael Fortney as vice chair.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for Commissioner Fortney as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? We'll go ahead and close nominations. Commissioner Fortney, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Lee, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot?
Yes.
Commissioner Laban? Commissioner Rudin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fortney?
Yes.
Chair Klein?
Yes. Thank you very much, Nancy. We'll pause for a few minutes again at this time to reorient ourselves with our new orientation. Please just give us a few minutes, thank you.
So, Vice Chair Fortney, move into the seat next to Chair Klein. And then Cory is going to reset the audience when you vote, or present this as when you vote, it's you voting.
Okay, you have to come over here. Okay, I promise that's, as far as I know, the last pause of the evening. I thank you very much for hanging with us. We'll go ahead and reconvene. We'll go ahead and pick up item number four, communications. Staff, are there any communications for this evening's meeting?
Thank you, Chair Klein. The commission received copies of emails and communications from the public about the Green Tree EIR, and these were also posted on our website. Also, another communication prior to the meeting, the applicant for items eight B and eight C has requested a continuance to June 21st. This is the Fairmont Plaza project and the hotel project. And this is to allow them extra time to review the conditions and perhaps propose some alternative conditions. So we hope to bring that back to you next month. Should you wish to grant the continuance, you can do that under approval of agenda by moving approval of the agenda with those two items continued to June 21st. And that's all we have.
Thank you very much, Director Morris. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? I guess, actually, let me back up. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. We're going to close item four, communications. We've received a request for continuance for item eight B and eight C and other correspondence related to the Green Tree EIR. Do we have a motion to continue to approve the agenda with the continuance for those two items being granted?
Make a motion to move the agenda with amendment.
Right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with items eight B and eight C continued to June 21st.
Can we clarify who seconded?
It was seconded by Commissioner Vargas.
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner, Vice Chair Fortney. Clerk Tolson, do you mind calling the roll?
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot?
Yes.
Commissioner Laban? Commissioner Rudin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fortney?
Yes.
Chair Klein?
Yes. Terrific, so those two items are continued. We'll now move to business from the floor. This is the time to address the commission with issues that are not on the agenda, that are within the commission, that are nonetheless within our subject matter jurisdiction. There is a maximum three minutes speaker. Does anyone wish to address the commission? If so, please line up at the podium. We will go ahead and close business from the, oh, wonderful, thank you, sorry, didn't mean to.
It's on green.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, so, business from the floor, things that are not on the agenda, you can address this over, as to anything not on the agenda now. Seeing none, we will close business from the floor and move to item seven, consent calendar. Now is the time for the consent calendar where we have the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 meeting. As a reminder, you know, if you weren't at the meeting, you should probably have seen, or you should have seen from the consent calendar. Before we do that, does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull any of the items that are on our consent calendar off the consent calendar? Okay, do we have a motion to move the consent calendar?
I'll move.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Fortney, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Wilkerson. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot?
Yes.
Commissioner Laban? Commissioner Rudin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fortney?
Yes.
Chair Klein?
Yes. Okay, so, we'll now move to public hearing, item eight. We have three items scheduled for the public hearing, however. Two of them have been pulled off, so we have one item scheduled for public hearing tonight. After I introduce the item, staff will make a brief presentation to the commission, and I will see if commissioners have questions of the staff. I'll then invite the applicant to make brief comments to the item. Then I will open the public hearing, and members of public will be allowed to speak for three minutes each. We will then close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the commission for deliberation in light of the public comments and all of the presentations. Our first public hearing item is regarding the Green Tree draft environmental impact report. Commission will not make a decision regarding the EIR tonight, but may ask questions of staff and will have the opportunity to provide comments on the draft document. Planning manager, Paimon Bavon, will present this item.
Thank you, good evening. Actually, we'll have Mark Teague, who's from Placeworks, the city's consultant, making the presentation. And then we have the applicant who'd like to say a few words when that's done. So I'll hand it over to Mark Teague.
Sorry, can you, what was the who?
Mark Teague with Placeworks.
Mark, Mark Teague? Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mark Teague, I'm the managing principal for environmental services for Placeworks and the consultant on this environmental impact report. What we'll go through this evening is a brief overview of the EIR. And please stop me if I use an acronym that you don't understand. I will try not to speak in acronyms. And then we'll talk about the findings of the EIR, and then we will all sit down and shut up and let the public talk, which is the real purpose of this evening's meeting, is to receive comment that we can respond to in writing in the EIR. Next slide, please. I think I already covered that, next slide, please. So the project overview is reuse of the former golf course. It's approximately 185 acres in size and would result in a little over 1,100 homes and approximately 300,000 square feet of commercial space. As you can see, it's located within the footprint of the former golf course and is adjacent to an existing residential neighborhood. The project itself includes parks and trails and a network of connectivity to allow each of the parts to talk to each other and to be received by each other. Next slide, please. The purpose of the EIR, the environmental impact report, is to inform the public and inform yourselves as decision makers of the probable or potential environmental impacts associated with the action. What the EIR does not do is recommend approval or denial. It's not its job. Its job is to try to solve issues that result from the analysis and provide mitigation measures or a statement of overriding considerations for you to consider the project. EIRs do not stop projects, they allow you to decide on the merits of the project. EIR usually has one of four potential outcomes. No impact, meaning we looked at it and it didn't exceed the community's threshold for significance. That's important because everything has an action, everything has a consequence. And if you exceed the threshold that's acceptable to the community, then you have to bring mitigation or changes to the project to get it below that level. If there's no impact, that means we looked at it and said, it's never going to happen. A less than significant impact means it's going to have an impact, but it's below that threshold that the community considers acceptable. Likewise, less than significant after mitigation means that the project would exceed that threshold, but through the application of a change to the project, either an operational change or a physical change to the project, we can bring those impacts below that threshold. And lastly, the significant and unavoidable. That means that even with mitigation applied, even with all the considerations of project modification, it's not possible to bring the impacts below the level, the threshold of either the city or the regional folks that have that threshold as an adopt. So those are the four findings that you'll find in your EIR, and you'll see the discussion about each of them in there. Next slide, please. It's a really comprehensive document. There's a list of topics that CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, require us to evaluate. Each of them are listed here, aesthetics through wildfire, they get added to over the years. Issues get added or subtracted depending on action at the state. But this is the comprehensive list that you will find in your document. Next slide, please. This is a summary of those impacts that were considered less than significant with the application of mitigation measures. So for example, under biological resources, we know there's a burrowing owl on the site. There's habitat for that, that's a huge issue for this particular project through the auspices of qualified biologists, a lot of effort. That section of the EIR is robust and has mitigation measures that are designed to make sure the owl is addressed appropriately. Noise mitigation, tribal cultural resources, a lot of these things are listed in the document, and there are conditions placed on the project as a result of their finding to change them and reduce them to a less than significant level. Does that mean you won't notice the impact? Absolutely, you're going to notice the impact. The difference is it's below the threshold of significance for us to be concerned about. Next slide, please. Now, as I mentioned, there are always often impacts that you cannot reduce to less than significant. A lot of them are regional in nature, some are global in nature. There's just no way that the project can get below certain thresholds and function. Those are listed before you, namely air quality, greenhouse gas, and transportation. These things are all actually connected. The ROG, the reactive organic gases, come about through the combustion of fossil fuels, which is what we put in our tanks to move our cars around. So if we have more traffic, we're going to have more fuel usage, which affects air quality. Electric cars are coming, but they're not here yet. Next slide, please. Before I, let me rewrap that. You can still approve a project that exceeds your thresholds, but you have to make a statement of overriding considerations. And in the findings that will accompany the final EIR for this project, there'll be a list of community benefits or reasons why the project should be approved. That too is up to the decision makers yourselves, and ultimately the council, to determine whether or not that is an appropriate reason. CEQA, again, the Environmental Quality Act, allows you to make those balanced, balanced decisions. Should we approve the project even though this impact will occur? It's not something the EIR has in it, we simply say you have to go through this effort if you need to move it on. CEQA is above all a public process. We do everything in the public eye. We provide all of the information, the courts call it showing our work. There are also many opportunities for the public to communicate with us on their concerns and their issues within the document. As you see before you, we are at the public review period, there's a 45-day review period that ends approximately the end of the month, and allows us to then proceed with preparing the final EIR. The final EIR contains written responses to everybody's comments, and that's why it's really important that we get them in writing if we can. My note-taking skills have not been good since high school. And, you know, taking people's verbal comments, we can sometimes mishear things. So we get them in writing is ideal, we will try to take the best notes that we can. Once we have the final EIR, they have to have a well-reasoned response. And so sometimes it takes a little while to give those responses, sometimes the questions are very good. Why didn't you do this? Why should this not happen? And we make sure that's all in there. We provide that to the commission. Again, public hearings will be required for you to take a look at the zoning and the general plan changes necessary to support the project. Next slide, please. We talked about, these are the different options where people will be able to provide input on the document and to provide input to yourselves on the project. Next slide, please. And this is the very best way to submit comments, is to email them to the city. City is the keeper of the keys, and they will have all of the documents associated. With that, Mr. Chair, I will sit down and allow the public to speak, which, as I mentioned, is indeed the purpose of this evening's.
Very good. Mark, before you are seated, does anyone have questions for Mr. Teague? Some job, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open the hearing to public comment. I invite you to line up behind the podium, three minutes per speaker. Or, so beginning with the applicant, I suppose, right? Sorry, first we'll ask the applicant to come up, I apologize. Rookie mistake.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the community staff. I'm Richard Loki, I'm an environmental planner, and I'm serving in the capacity of project manager for Green Tree. We've been involved with the project for about two years. And the planning process for Green Tree began, however, in 2016 when the golf course closed. I'm not here to give you a full presentation this evening about the project, my comments are going to be very brief. I would like to frame this project in the context of its use and its physical setting. This is a reuse project, it's an infill project, and it's a housing project fundamentally, providing both senior housing and what we call workforce housing. That is housing for young couples, individuals, professionals, those who work locally in the community, most likely working in jobs in biotech and high-tech manufacturing at the business park directly across the freeway. Green Tree's been designed to accommodate that kind of housing. Green Tree is also what I like to affectionately call a connected project. We're using complete streets, we're incorporating two parks, three miles of trails, over 40 acres of open space, and lots of pedestrian and bicycle connections to the existing neighborhoods while controlling traffic. As Mark has just said to you, it's not possible always to mitigate all of the environmental impacts of a project. And had Green Tree been shrunk down to a fraction of its size, we probably would have slipped underneath those thresholds. But this is kind of a badge of honor to us as planners because what we believe we're doing with this project is addressing fundamental housing need and doing it in an environmentally sustainable and sensitive way. Thank you very much, I'm here all evening if you have more questions of me.
Richard, thank you very much. I'd like to open the, open up the Commissioner Commons questions of the Congress representative. Oh, quiet bench tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
The moment we've all been waiting for, I'd now invite the public to, please join us, behind the podium. Three minutes. We'll provide, this is the first time I'm using this. So, we'll see how it works.
I'd like to make a little aside about your haircut comment. I was once told that God only made a few perfect heads, the rest he covered with hair.
For that, we'll give you a few extra seconds.
I last spoke at a city council meeting approximately five years ago when the Green Tree, when the first proposal for the Green Tree project was presented. I had three major concerns, the fate of the burrowing owls, storm drain discharge, and commercial areas specifically a grocery store. At that time, the council assured us that there, that there would be a 50-foot green strip between the existing homes and future development, and any building behind existing homes would be single-story. As I read the plan, I'm still working through the appendix, it seems as though everything is still very fluid. The plan actually states that amendments to the plan may be necessary over time. Is there a chance areas designated as park and/or open space could be changed and/or eliminated? The south of Sequoia Drive neighborhood includes open space whose primary functions include serving as a buffer between planned uses and existing homes. Buffers are generally a minimum of 50 feet wide. I am particularly concerned about the homes on the east end of Grand Canyon Drive. I do not see any open space behind those homes. Additionally, the neighboring parcel appears to be designated as residential medium-high, implying multi-level residences. Page DS 30, standards for low maintenance density includes a requirement, lots located adjacent to existing residents are required to have a 50-foot setback to start of a lot. On that same page, standards for low density includes a requirement, development shall be limited to one-story houses. Based on the assurances made by the city council when this project was first proposed and included in the March 2021 draft, those two statements should apply to all development standards regardless of resident density or location. In other words, either north or south of Sequoia. The existing intersection of Yellowstone and Sequoia will be replaced with a small, and I emphasize small, format 80-foot roundabout that includes pedestrian bicycle facilities. Will, not knowing anything about any of this stuff, will that be big enough for commercial trucks and emergency vehicles? The park north of Sequoia will consist of multipurpose play, playfields, ball courts, playgrounds, and escape park area, escape play area, excuse me. While any of these amenities, will any of these amenities be lighted for night use? Will there be off-street parking like at the park south of Sequoia? Figure 5-5 pedestrian bicycle and off-street trail connectivity shows an existing trail behind the homes on Grand Canyon Drive. Is everyone aware that that path is privately owned? Is anything planned to prevent access of non-leisure town residents to that path? As an alternative to the lighting and landscape district, a park maintenance district could either be created for the specific planned area or the area could be annexed into a neighboring maintenance district for ongoing maintenance. Will existing homes be included as part of that district causing an increase in our taxes? At the end of the report, you had two goals. There were a number of goals, there were two that I don't think have been fulfilled. The policy LUP 3 encouraging development to consider trans, transportation and that kind of thing. I don't believe the plan is consistent with the goal yet. I don't believe the plan is consistent with the goal yet. The only reference to public transportation is that city bus will be involved at a later date, understandably. Additionally, pathways, some secondary and all tertiary roads in the north side of Sequoia Plan will be privately maintained. Will the general public be allowed to use them? Which also brings up the concern regarding existing pathways, which are privately owned, the one that goes behind my house, for instance. The second one is locate parks to maximize safety. It appears from the report that input from the neighbors on the south side of Sequoia was used to plan that park. But neighborhood input from neighbors north of Sequoia was not. Thank you.
And what was your name?
Oh, I'm Frances Peterson.
Frances Peterson.
And I actually had a copy that I was going to give to you, but I'll give it to that gentleman who talked who doesn't give notes.
I heard you. And if you don't mind, when you come to podium, just share with us your name so that we can...
I'm giving you my name.
Yeah, thank you. General announcement for everyone. Thank you.
That's what I was first going to do. Good evening, after good evening. My name is Ann Romer. I have lived on Geyser Court for almost 22 years. My property backs onto the golf course. Because of time constraints, I'm only going to talk about one thing. I have lots of things I could talk about, but it's only going to be burrowing owls. I'm a birder. From 2007 to 2010, I volunteered observing breeding birds for the Breeding Bird Atlas for Solano County. And at that time, my block went from Allison Drive to Meridian Road, Elmira to Vacaville Parkway. It was big. It was great. It was a great habitat. And of course, the owls were there. Also, in 2007, the Institute for Bird Population, which is located in Point Reyes, they contacted me wanting to know if I would volunteer to check out the status of the burrowing owls in Vacaville. It was part of a 10-year program. And I said, sure. And so I did. And where the owls were before, they weren't. It was near 505, but they were at Green Trees. And so I documented them. And in 2007, there were seven active nests. And I have the GPS coordinates. And there were 121 individuals. And then through the subsequent years, the population came and went. But it stayed. I mean, we had the birds the whole time. And now they're gone. Between 1996 and 2015, California lost 33% of their burrowing owls, mostly due to habitat destruction. And that's what's happened here. And to me, that's very sad. But there is hope and there is light at the end of the tunnel. If you choose to proceed along this route, they maybe can be brought back. Between Yellowstone and White Sands west of Teton, there's this triangular area that's not big enough to put in any homes or any buildings. And right now, what's the plan is walking trails and something to do with the pond. You know, that pond there. Maybe that would be really good, burrowing owl habitat. It's a way to maybe bring them back. The city of Antioch has set aside 2.4 acres for burrowing owls. They are protected there. They cannot be removed. And it's a going, you know, an ongoing program. It is paid for through, it's paid for by an endowment that was created by the city. Berkeley also has a place for burrowing owls. So if Berkeley can do it, and Antioch can do it, perhaps Vacaville can do it. I have great hope, and I hope that you will all consider this because it's a win-win situation. It's win for the owls, it's win for the people. And it's great PR. So thank you for your time.
Commissioners, I'm Tom Markle. I used to work in Solano County, probation officer for 32 years and retired, now living and happily retired in Green Tree. Mr. Wilkerson, you tonight just invited us to say something. You said, "Anything interesting happen today?" You know, kind of a funny little thing. Yes. And it relates to what we're talking about tonight with the Green Tree project. And what we, my wife, Ann, is back here. What we witnessed today is something we hope to witness again. And we're not convinced that'll happen. We're seeing a little hawk being born, bred, this little fledgling. We saw her today in the binoculars. So, you know, that's kind of cool to actually see birth like that. We, we're not birders. I'm not a professional at that, but I enjoy nature. Behind our house are seven trees, three of different, I don't know, I'm not a tree person. I don't know what they are. They're firs and pines. In those trees and from those trees coming into our yard are whitetail kites, red-tailed hawks, kestrels that we're seeing born, lickers, starlings, orioles, doves, quail, sparrows, hummingbirds. Nature is right there behind our house in those trees. So we are hoping those trees don't get cut. We're hoping they don't get taken out because that's the home of all of these critters I just talked about, including other critters, squirrels, all the different things that live out there, you know. So my request is to tap into the visual part of your mind. Think about what I just said and see what I said, not just think about it. Come out and look at it. You know, if you take the time to look at nature, it's there right in front of you. You don't even need binoculars to see it. It's right there. So my request from me is, when you are looking at the Green Tree project and I see more and more trees dropping, dying, maybe that's where the housing is going to go, that's understandable. But there are other trees. There are other parts of this land that can be preserved and should be preserved. When I look at Vacaville, I have eight seconds. We used to be a place where it was a destination. That's no longer true. Vacaville, in my mind, when I talk to people that I know, Vacaville has lost that identity. So how do we get Vacaville back on some kind of map where we are a destination? We have only built homes, destroyed land. The Green Tree project is sadly an example of that. The Nut Tree project used to be a destination place for many, many people coming up and down the corridor. No longer that. It's a shopping center. It's LA. And is that what we want? Is that our identity? So I ask you to think about that. Thank you for letting me go over a little bit.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Jim Robbins. I'm a resident of Leisure Town. I'm also a retired certified safety professional with about 25 years in heavy earth work. I wanted to address some of my concerns with the air quality issues that are described in the draft EIR. I also want to share that most of these comments were shared with city staff prior to the issuing of the document. None of them were incorporated. None of them were addressed, none of them were responded to. On page 4.6-1 of the draft EIR regarding air quality, it states that the analysis presented is based in part on the technical report included as Appendix 4.6-1. The majority of the text in the draft EIR regarding air quality, greenhouse gas modeling, exhaust emissions, and construction dust control measures are quoted directly from this appendix. So the comments I'm making are directed based on what I read in Appendix 4.6-1. Just to start with, I would strongly suggest that the city try to get certified industrial hygienists to review these documents and so forth in order to get an independent opinion. And I'll go into why here in just a moment. Talking about exhaust emissions and control measures for nitrous oxides and particulate matter, page 2-14 of the assessment requires the use of Tier 4 off-road diesel construction equipment. And that's a good thing because prior to that, we were using Tier 3 equipment. The Tier 4 equipment has 90% less particulate and nitrous oxides emissions. That's a huge, huge change. That's a good thing. Now, following that statement, it says that there are alternatives, that the use of Tier 4 equipment is not feasible. But it doesn't define what feasibility is in this situation. So if I'm a construction superintendent out there, "I don't want to pay for Tier 4, I'm just going to use Tier 3," then everything goes out the window. And what I mean by everything goes out the window is there is a table in Attachment 2 of the Green Tree Construction Emissions Summary by phase that has noted that the data in the table is from mitigated output from Tier 4 equipment. That's great. However, you've already got alternatives to using Tier 4 equipment, which would raise emissions by a significant effect. So my comment is that the data that's there represents using Tier 4 equipment and it's annualized. And you're already opening the door to using Tier 3 equipment, which are going to raise those emissions and make that table moot. So you're relying on something that is probably not likely to happen. And also, it doesn't address the acute issues. For example, today, Sire was running a tractor and a disc to do the fire break. Clouds of dust were coming off and blowing over my neighbor's yards. And that's just doing a fire break. If they're doing full-blown construction, there's going to be clouds. So I think that that's an issue that needs to be addressed because, like I said, I've got a neighbor who has COPD. She loves to sit on her deck overlooking what used to be the golf course and read the Bible. If she's doing that and a tractor goes by and a cloud of dust, she's liable to have a serious medical issue right at that moment. That's not addressed in this plan at all. It's all annualized output and emissions. That's a problem. I want to go into some general comments and then I'll get into some more specifics.
Sorry, but time is up. I'll give you a couple more seconds to wrap up, sir.
All right.
If you want me to take your comments, I'd love to.
I've already submitted them in writing. So there's nothing in the plan for monitoring dust in real time. That's an issue. That's what I'm saying. And the only thing in there is, well, you got a phone number you can call and we'll get a response to you in 48 hours. If there's clouds of dust blowing over, 48 hours isn't going to solve it. There should be an SOP in place. There should be real-time monitoring in place that would alert the construction crew that there's a problem. And they should have an SOP in hand at that time to address that issue and correct it. Shouldn't have to make phone calls. It should be an onsite issue that gets corrected. So I'm looking forward to some comments. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Winter. And I'm a member of Leisure Town homeowners association. I'm on the board of directors there. And I'm also one of the Green Tree liaisons. We've been meeting on a regular basis with the Lokis and city staff on the plans. And these meetings have been very productive, very open-minded. And people see what our needs are. It's my understanding that this is dedicated to environmental impact statements. So I have two concerns. One is the increased traffic on Yellowstone. We're going to add approximately 1,100-plus homes. That's going to equate to approximately 3,000 people. They're going to use Yellowstone as a throughway. Yellowstone is a little different than other infill projects is it runs through a senior community. And the seniors are not quite as fast on their feet as in other areas. So we're looking at calming, you know, part of the plan has rerouted areas out of the Leisure Town area, but we're still going to have that increased traffic. So we've looked at different calming measures like radar signs, flashing signs, sidewalks, possibly more stop signs that'll help slow down traffic and still be able to meet the needs of safety vehicles responding to Leisure Town. So, you know, we're very interested in that. Secondly, in mitigation of dust, I think Jim just really summed it up best. But we are a senior community. And many of the people in the senior community have health reasons, breathing issues on oxygen and those things. This increased dust could cause issues with their health. So these are just a couple of the areas that we appreciate. We will be responding in writing. I think you've got some of it now already. So I thank you for your time.
I'm excited to see a little more diversity on the planning commission myself. My name's Nancy Martin, and I actually live in a community east of Leisure Town. It's called the Lockpadon Colony. And it's three little roads with two-and-a-half-acre rural residential parcels. We've been told by the city, as they've developed along Leisure Town and now Green Tree, which was kind of of a surprise to us because we were working with keeping more open space before the golf course collapsed. The traffic has gotten tremendously bad on Leisure Town Road. I've had to call the police every time AD backs up and say this. It's like road warriors out here. I mean, I've seen people passing, going south in the northbound lane. And so we're told over and over again by the city, and I realize this is the planning commission, but that the traffic problems will be solved when all the development is finally completed up Leisure Town Road, 1,500 feet east of Leisure Town, where it is currently. And we certainly hope something can be done before that along with the Green Tree development because we can't get out of our road now onto Leisure Town safely as it is. We have Maple, Walnut, and Poplar roads, which only Walnut has a stoplight. The other stoplight goes into Maplewood, which is a small senior community on the east side. It's the only development up in that area. And they have a stoplight for the 80 homes that are there. But all of the residents that live in the rural residential don't have any access other than making a dangerous left turn and sometimes a kind of crazy right turn to get on Leisure Town Road. So we're hoping through the development of this project that something can be done to mitigate that. And we're also hoping as the project is finished that we could have some access to grocery through walking. We currently have Maple Road, Maplewood residents that walk up and down our country lanes. And that's great. But it'd be so great to have a pedestrian overpass so people could actually walk into the open space at Green Tree. So that's just for the future, for you guys to think about. The other thing I heard over and over again tonight was open space, open space, open space. Open space is the public's open space. Green Tree Golf Course was private open space. You had to pay to drive the golf course around and play golf. That's private. And we see what happens with private open space. It goes away because somebody sees the value more in selling it and turning it into a development. So as you consider the open space that you have in this project, remember, that's the public trust. That's the only way middle and lower-income people have access to open views. Studies have shown 20 minutes of viewing an open landscape lowers your cortisol and increases your endorphins. 40 minutes of walking a day helps you control your diabetes. There's a term called forest bathing. Maybe you have heard of it, but plants are cleaning themselves up all day. And they're putting out aromatherapy that we aren't even aware of sometimes. It's cleaning the air, it's got antibiotics. It's cleaning the air, it's got antibiotics in it, it's got antifungals, it's health, it's a way to stay healthy. So 10 acres seems like a paltry amount of park, and I'm sorry, Mr. Loki, I missed the total amount of open space with the project, but I would encourage you to replace what was 185 acres of open space with slightly more than 10 areas of park and connections, so that people from every community around there can get out and get access to the open space on a skateboard, or a bicycle, or by walking. And thinking in the future, if they are going to develop 1,500 acres east into our area, then having that connected right on through. I'm currently going to work with Solano Land Trust, which we're members of, to try to get them to purchase the property behind us, so that we can keep an open birding corridor that goes all the way out to the east farmland, because those Swainson Hawks and Boring Owls and all-in nature that comes in, we saw a mink on the canal banks behind our homes. That's something we all need exposure to. And when you have a bunch of gray-haired people here advocating for open space and nature, that's the next generation that's going to enjoy that, because we're not going to be here that much longer. So that's also what this is about, is keeping that connection to nature and supporting humanity with what open space has to offer us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is, and staff and public, my name is Roberto Veldez. I'm a longtime Vacaville resident, at least 30-plus years here. I'm here to, even though I appreciate the, what I heard from your last hearing in regards to this matter today, I really appreciate the developer's response that he's kind of flexible when he talked about adding signage to the trail between the parks, that one-mile trail that we talked. But I'm here nevertheless to tell you, and I think I've mentioned to you, I am involved with Autobonds Society and other groups, that I'm concerned also the significant impact that's going to happen to the Swainson Hawk, Boring Owls, and Whitetail Kite and associated species. I'm talking especially about the Berry elderberry beetle and plant, and Northwestern palm turtle. These are all species that are, have been targeted by the proposed habitat conservation of plant of Solano Conna since 1998, as far as I can remember. Anyway, so the other thing I'm concerned is, somebody mentioned about the trees. Let me give you, I read all the biological assessment and that are indicated in your online sources, and thank you, Mr. Payman, for helping me with that. And I can tell you that it's significant, too, that you've got, the arborists, it was hard there, they identified 226 trees that are survivable out of 789. That's a lot of trees that the birds, Swainson Hawk, Boring Owls, I mean, and Whitetail Kite, and even Boring Owls can use. And they don't need trees also to survive. So you should think that before you start, and developers should think of, before you start cutting trees. And I've seen a significant number of trees cut when it was not being dealt with during the COVID, a COVID interim, whatever you want to call it. Anyway, but, you know, I really am here just to get a further clarification about what is it the proposed trails, that system that's going to be implemented within that project? Not just the one that is between the two north and south park, but also I want to know more about from the developer or from whoever, one of your staff people. Can you please elaborate a little bit more about what is it that, what's going to be the trails that are leading into the park? None of us live in a vacuum, and certainly that park is not, but what I love about that park, it's perfect for the city to connect everything. But again, I'm not to make the decision, I'm just here to give you my insight as to what I think can be done. And I think it's a great opportunity for the city to do something good, and for the developer really to show that he means what he says he's going to do. Okay, so that's what I'm asking, clarifying the trails.
Thank you, Mr. Roberto. And can we get some clarification on the trees and the trails?
In terms of what sort of clarification, Mr. Veldez?
I'd like to know more about, Mr. Payman, I'd like to know more about the, what other trail, I heard the developer last time talk about that they were thinking of putting, having trails come into the park, and I'm not sure, you know, maybe I didn't hear you well. Today I may not hear you well, I've got one of my ears plugged. But I want to just, can you elaborate a little bit more as to what you know? And if you don't know, okay, you don't know, but we've still got a step more to go before we finalize, before the city council finalize this project. So I just want you to clarify that, not only for me, but for the public, what we stand to gain or lose with this project.
Yeah, we'll take that under advisement, we'll look at the trails, and I think there was a question about the number of trees as well.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to share the plans that we have thus far that show the trails and show the landscaping elements. I have your information, I'm happy to send that to you.
We can talk further.
Okay.
Anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to give everyone a chance, is there anyone that has not yet addressed the Green Tree hearing, public hearing item, that would like to address, just raise your hand, or... Okay. So we will now close the public hearing on the item and bring it to the commission for Do I have commissioner comments or questions on the item? Mr. Portney?
Yeah, I do have. Thank you. I do have a couple of comments. After taking in the notes that were given to us and talking to community members in Green Tree, that the traffic mitigation issues on Yellowstone seem to be one of the largest, if not the largest component that's going to be, the only thing, it doesn't sound like it's been completely settled with most of the residents, other than some air quality during construction. My only comment is that I truly encourage the developer to sit with the community members and get those traffic mitigation members, our items measured, hammered out before it comes back to us again, and that we have input from our public safety friends, too, as well, especially fire, in regards to those mitigation measures. The other comment is, at the very beginning, we had two alternatives, and I'm not supportive of reducing the commercial footprint by 15% as a project alternative. That's just my opinion, and I think we would need the commercial space that's out there off of Orange Drive in Yellowstone for those residents. Those are my only comments.
Yeah, and I started with Vice Chair Portney, because I know it's in his district, and he's thought, he's got a ton of notes, no one can see them, but I...
We'll keep it to the purview tonight of just our EIR.
Okay. But I'd like to go around and start with Commissioner Vargas, and we'll just go down the dais for comments or questions.
Sure, thank you, Chair. You know, I did have an opportunity to meet with some of the folks there in the community of Green Tree, probably about a month ago. And the biggest concerns were the traffic, of course, on Yellowstone. That seemed to be the most pressing issue, and also the dust mitigation. They had given specific scenarios where there was impact by not anything groundbreaking from the project itself, but just some of the, I think, some of the cleanup that was going on, and it was creating quite a dust, and for some of the members and some of the residents there, had some impact on them. I think there were a few that suffered from COPD. There was a comment earlier from one of the community members, and so it really resonated in really taking that into account, and so I'd like to convey that, what was conveyed to me, to the developers as well. I'll pause.
Thank you, Commissioner Vargas. Commissioner Lightfoot?
Thank you. No, I agree wholeheartedly. The, brought to my attention, I, dust mitigation and the health of the residents in the area seem to be very important, and I agree. Love to hear comments back from the developer in the next, or the final draft about what is feasible and not feasible in those areas. And lots more to talk about, but specific to the EIR, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lightfoot, for those comments. Commissioner Rudin?
There we go. First off, thank you, everybody, for coming out. This is, your input is very helpful for all this as well. I would like to also add on to the concerns with traffic mitigation. Specifically, in the traffic circulation with the handout we received, or the communication we received, I was very curious when I was looking through this, what mitigation measures are going to be used? And the curb extensions or bulbouts, or I've heard them also called as chokers, is mentioned in here. I lived on a street in a different city that had those, and that is really loud when people hit those at 50 miles an hour. They do not calm traffic. I'm sure there's studies that say they do, but living down the street from them for five years, nope, they still flew down that street, which was a 35 mile an hour street at 50 miles an hour. So I would, I'm curious to hear back what the traffic calming measures, practical traffic calming measures are going to be. Also, I know of a city that put those, the bulbouts in, and first responders, fire trucks couldn't fit through there, so they had to rip them out and fix them again. So that is not a fix-all in my own personal experience. But traffic is absolutely a problem, and I think there needs to be more than one way looked at this. Visibility is great, up to the extent of somebody stills going to fly by at 45 miles an hour, it'll just be really bright as they're flying through it. So I think perhaps stop signs, more stop signs. If anything, it might be annoying enough, there are people will find a different route. People are going to go the path of least resistance, especially when there's traffic on 80, and if they can fly down Yosemite to get to Nut Tree, they will. But you make it annoying enough, they won't. Also, I am curious, as it was brought up with the trees, are the large-growth trees, will they stay, will they stay there? Will there be, you know, look at it again, and trying to keep as many of those as possible, especially if there's established nests or habitats in there? And then also the dust, the dust being a very serious problem that I look forward to hearing more response on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes. First, I want to thank you to everyone for your time. Speakers coming out, reading through the pamphlet to the developer, to city staff, the extensive work you guys have done on this, I mean, this is a huge project. And I'm born and raised Vacaville, and so Green Tree means a lot to me, because I used to go out there and play golf with my father. And that would be the connective tissue for him and I. We still play golf today, but, you know, there's nothing close for me to go to to play to have that connective tissue with him. And so the stories of being able to take my children out to somewhere at Green Tree, where they could see, maybe it's not golf, but maybe they could see wildlife or something, or a park a little bit more, to just have that connective tissue with them. And so the stories and what you guys spoke about tonight really resonated with me, because I heard quality of life. And, you know, I'm at an age where, you know, sorry, Mom and Dad, but they have some gray hairs, too. And, you know, so I look at that, I look at, you know, in their backyard, they're doing the exact same thing that you were talking about tonight, sir. So I appreciate your comments. I take it to heart deeply, just in terms of quality of life for everyone in this town. So I just kind of, my speech.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkerson, and I want to echo John's gratitude to everyone who came tonight on behalf of the whole commission. This is a lively crowd for us. We don't really get, and you are a lively crowd. And you've been very respectful, and your comments have been absolutely spot-on. I would echo John's comments about quality of life as well. And this is the nice thing about the draft EIR, is that it is not the time of choosing between alternatives, it's not the time of making final decisions, right? We have the ability to vet the information and understand, to contextualize the comments that were made tonight, and to review them a little more deeply. I've prepared EIRs before, and I've reviewed them, and I will concede that you don't read every page. You don't even read every page you write. But some people don't, I do, but, just kidding. But that's just to say that your comments have been so helpful, because it gives us a chance to really dive into the comments and compare the data. The data, knowing God we trust, all others bring data. So the staff, I know, has worked very hard on this, and I look forward to hearing more about, in particular, the real-time monitoring issues that were brought up. My stepfather has COPD, so, you know, I understand what it means. This is a senior-serving community, so you have vulnerable people living adjacent to a construction site. It's a massive project, so there's going to be a lot of construction. It's not, someone said earlier, I'm spoiling my name, it's not a typical infill project for this reason. And every infill project is different, but I, it sounds like we have a very able team. I know Amon is best at this kind of thing, and the developer, I've heard very, very good things about the interactions with the community. So I know, in personal experience, that it's not always the case. So I think we're very blessed to be in the position we're in, and it sounds like this is not a contentious draft EIR. I think we have a lot of steps to clear ahead of us, but I just want to say thank you all for coming tonight. And with that, unless, were there other, anyone else have any burning questions or comments? Would love to leave anything out? Okay. I want to emphasize that the comments are due by May 31st. You can email them to the city. I have a comment letter that was submitted tonight. Feel free to submit them, you know, we, whatever you've written, those are, that passed, that's perfectly fine to submit that as a comment. We treat paper the same as we do electronics. And I think that's the most important thing to emphasize, is that get your comments in and get on the record. Okay. With that, why don't we take a, why don't we get on to the next item? Or does, we could take a break?
You need one up?
Okay, I don't need a break, but I just want to make that offer. Okay. I know we're used to being remote, so we take breaks any time. But, okay, so we'll move to, we'll now turn to the next item, which is business portion of our agenda. Let me get, figure out what did I do? Yeah, so we'll now turn to item six, business from the floor. Or, excuse me, not business from the floor, we did that. Okay, we'll now turn to item nine. I've lost my pages here, sorry.
CIP.
Okay, yeah, we'll now turn to, that was business item number, item number nine. It's the annual capital improvement program review. Excuse me, we have three items tonight. First is the annual capital improvement program review. The Housing Elements Subcommittee will act on appointing members to that, and the planning commission training from our director on that. So our first item is the capital improvement program. The presenter is Assistant Planner Edward Lincoln, which I... The presenter is Assistant Planner Edward Lincoln, which I, welcome to, are you a new face, Mr. Lincoln? Will you tell us about yourself? Welcome.
My name's Edward Lincoln. I've been here at the city now for about two months. I'm originally born and raised from Portland, Oregon. I lived in San Diego for the past 16 years, and I've lived in Sacramento now for about, about a year and a half, a year and eight months, so I'm new to this area.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I hope you're not scared to come back. Our meetings are not normally so heavy, but anyway, floor is yours.
Sounds good.
And Tyra, good to see you as well.
It's wonderful to see you in person, so thank you.
As we've established, I'm Edward Lincoln, new assistant planner here for the city. I'm giving your presentation on the 2022, 2023 Capital Improvements Program additions of the general plan consistency review. First slide. We're requesting that you recommend the city council find that this proposed 2023, 2022, 2023 list additions are consistent with the general plan. California state law requires that the capital improvement program projects be consistent with the general plan. This time around, we have 22 projects that have been proposed to be added to the C I P for the fiscal year of the 2022, 23 budget. Some of the highlights that we have this time around include downtown specific plan improvements, downtown specific plan of water line upsizing, intelligent transportation system master plan, the Mariposa Neighborhood Center repair, Wycof Sewer Project, and also the Georgie Duke improvements. And there are more projects, and we actually have the interim Public Works Manager here to also answer any other questions that you might have on some of those other projects as well.
You know, the intelligent transportation plan escaped my notice, so we're moving on from the dumb transportation plan. Sorry. The regular one, we're moving on from that one.
Some of the goals that are consistent with the general plan include promoting a physically, socially, and economically vibrant downtown, also providing adequate water infrastructure facilities to meet current and future populations, also collecting, transmitting, treating, and disposing of wastewater in ways that are safe, sanitary, and environmentally acceptable. And in closing, the planning staff, we've reviewed all of these projects and found that they are consistent with the general plan, and we're recommending that you guys recommend in a simple motion, recommend to the city council, you find that the proposed 2022, 23 C I P projects list is consistent with the general plan.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Rudin, is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved and seconded, we will now take it up for deliberation. Does anyone have comments or questions about any of the 22 items on the plan that have been presented? Yeah, I like the public art ones. Oh. Hang tight.
Oh, there we go. That's okay. Got a learning curve today. I really like the public art for the utility boxes. It's, sometimes it's the little things that just kind of dress it up, and it's really nice, and reaching out to local artists, and again, quality of life, but also just recognizing local artists. So that was just one that stuck out to me when I looked through all these, so I just wanted to comment that I thought that was a nice one.
Yeah, that one stuck out, I agree. Were there other comments? Anybody have questions for Mr. Lincoln?
We're all good.
Okay. Commissioner Vargas has a question.
No, I was just going to make a comment about the Georgie Duke improvements, and very excited about that. You know, it's, my little one plays basketball there, does a lot of activities, and so I think, probably speak on behalf of a lot of folks that use Georgie Duke, that long time overdue, so it's exciting to see that. And Mr. Lincoln, I know this is your first presentation, but you did an excellent job, so I'll close.
Okay. So we have, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Tolson, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudin? Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fortney?
Yes.
Chair Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. And appreciate the presentation. You know, the last two people who presented the new ones, they did, are they still, did they stay with Vacaville after the time commission?
No comment.
Okay, yikes. Well, we hope to see you again, Mr. Lincoln. Thank you. So we'll now move to the next item on our agenda. Director Morris will present the Housing Element Subcommittee.
Thank you, Chair Klein, and members of the commission. As some of you were here for, in November, the commission formed a Housing Element Subcommittee, and with some departures from the commission, some new arrivals, staff is requesting that the chair appoint up to three members of the commission to serve on the Housing Element Subcommittee. It is a great time to join this subcommittee because we are currently drafting the Housing Element, and we'll be launching a public draft this summer. We do, we would like to utilize the subcommittee as we have in the past for our first meeting to really dive deeply into some of the data and the assumptions that are underpinning the Housing Element, vet that with this subcommittee as part of helping us develop the best housing element possible. I do want to note, in the event you are not appointed by the chair, or you're a member of the public who's watching from home, would like to come to the meetings, people who are not appointed can receive the materials and be involved in that way, and members of the public are welcome to attend the meetings. They are actually public meetings. So with that, the recommendation is that the chair query his fellow commissioners about who's interested in being on the subcommittee, and then announce the appointment of three commissioners.
Thank you, Director Morris. Point of information, so I'm not going to put myself, but would I be able to, as a member of the commission, attend the meetings?
We can't have more than three of you attend the subcommittee meetings.
Okay.
And as a chair, you can't appoint yourself, depending on who else is interested, et cetera, but yes, only three to avoid having a quorum of you at the subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, I know Vice Chair Fortney was really eager to serve on it, so I wouldn't want to feel that from him. But besides Vice Chair Fortney and Mr. Commissioner Wilkerson, was anyone else interested?
I was.
Commissioner Rudin? Okay.
I was on the Housing Elements, or one meeting that we had, and I'd be happy to join.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that we have our three, so I'm happy to, to appoint Commissioner Lightfoot, Commissioner Rudin, and Commissioner Wilkerson. Oh, well, it wasn't the time for questions, Commissioner Wilkerson.
All right, it's already done.
He didn't want to look this way. He just, he just spoke and then looked that way.
We closed.
Time commitment.
Oh, we're planning two meetings of the subcommittee, and we will schedule them by, not necessarily doodle polling, but nonetheless, we'll try to schedule them around what works best for the three subcommittee members. Each meeting should be approximately one and a half to two hours, and they all are going to happen in May-June timeframe, in order to be helpful to the housing element process. So we'll, right after this meeting, now that we know who the three are, we'll be in touch to get those scheduled. Again, working around your schedules a bit as much as we can.
But all material will go?
Yes, will be on the website, available to the public, and we'll probably be doing them via Zoom, just for that convenience factor, which means people could actually listen in from remote and not via the meeting.
Yeah, so that was my next question. So if we're going to do it by Zoom, could commissioners view it by Zoom without a Brown Act issue? Tricky legal question.
It's not really tricky legal question. Sorry. So is this, I have to ask you, is this meeting going to be noticed? It's a public meeting?
No, it's a committee meeting.
Okay. So what I would recommend is that commissioners that want to receive the information or view the meeting, that they do it after the meeting's concluded on a Zoom recording. That's the best way for you to get the information. And also, I would just, you know, posit that staff, you know, is present at all these meetings and always willing to provide feedback to the commission. When the information comes back to you for a public, public meeting, you know, you will be receiving all the information out of the subcommittee that way as well.
Okay. So Commissioner, Vice Chair Fortney will have to wait until the meeting's over, I guess.
I'll be the first to watch it.
I am sure you will. Okay, so I think, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to the last item of business, which would be the, the third item is the planning commissioner training. Assistant City Attorney Andrea Borba.
While Andrea's getting situated, I'm just going to introduce this presentation as the first of our training series. So this month, I nominated Andrea to be the trainer for the commission. Next month, you'll be hearing from me about CEQA. And so as she gets situated in the presenter's chair, we're really excited to bring you the first official training of the current season.
Good evening, Chair Klein, Vice Chair Fortney, and commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here. I haven't actually had the opportunity to meet all of you personally, and so I'm really excited to do that. But in the meantime, Commissioner, Director Morris has asked me to provide you with some training related to some fundamentals that are important for the commission and the public to know related to the conduct of commission meetings. And there's a lot of information here, so I want to start off by saying, you know, this is a beginning, and that learning is an ongoing process, and as we go through meetings, you know, more questions will come up. And so I just want to say that, you know, this isn't comprehensive, be all end all of the things that you'll learn as you sit on the commission. So I want to start with the law that governs the conduct of public meetings. It's the Brown Act. And just to give you a little bit of history, in 1951, a reporter by the name of Mike Harris for the San Francisco Chronicle, he spent six weeks going to public meetings in San Francisco. And he understood that the state law already existed that regulated public meetings, but what he found during the time that he followed public meetings, that there was a lot of private caucusing that was going on, and that secret meetings were discovered. He wrote a 10-part series, which is still available on the internet, that was called Your Secret Government, and that ran in 1952. And as a result of that, the California League of Cities started drafting legislation that was then pushed forward by Ralph Brown, and was adopted by the legislature and put into law by the, signed into law by Governor Earl Warren in 1953. So that's how we got to the Brown Act, was some good diligent investigative reporting that, you know, led to the conclusion that we could do better. So the key to understanding the Brown Act, it can be simplified into one sentence, and that's all meetings shall be open and public, except for the meetings that the Brown Act exempts. So I think if we start with the mindset that all of our meetings are public, and there are only certain things that are exempt, that can guide us in how we interact with one another and how we conduct the business of the government. So I'm not going to read off slides to you, but, you know, the Brown Act applies to your commission meetings, as you know, and, you know, the real purpose is to promote transparency to the public. So what qualifies as a meeting? And it's kind of interesting, because we just had the question get sent to me a second ago about the commissioners attending a Zoom meeting of a subcommittee. So any time that there is a quorum of commissioners that are coming together at the same time and place, and even time and place has an asterisk on it, because the electronic world we live in has made that a much time and time and place a much broader arena than it used to be, to hear and discuss, deliberate, or deliberate, or take action on anything that's within the jurisdiction of the commission. So what doesn't qualify as a meeting? Individual contacts or conversations amongst commissioners or between commissioners and staff do not qualify as meetings. Attendance at conferences, I think many of you had the opportunity to attend the Planning Commission Commissioners Conference earlier this year. That is allowable. Social or ceremonial gatherings, you know, one that happens a lot in Vacaville is, you know, the council members might go out to throw out the first pitch at a Little League opening ceremonies. Community meetings, and that would be community meetings that are not sponsored by the city. So as a city, we do do, especially for items that will come before the planning commission, we do organize meetings with the community. We have to be careful about those. If it's something that's put on by the city, then we do have to make sure that we don't have a quorum of commissioners there. But if it's something that's put on by another organization in the community, then you are allowed to attend that. And you're also allowed to attend meetings of other legislative bodies, so you could go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, a quorum of the commission could go there. However, if at any point there's a quorum of the commission together, you cannot discuss the specific business of the planning commission when you're together at any of these meetings, gatherings that are exempt from the Brown Act. So I think going back to that it's always public is important. So when, if you're ever in a situation where there is a quorum of the commission together, you want to be really careful that you're not inadvertently discussing something that's within the commission's jurisdiction. So there's, there's a special type of meeting called a serial meeting, and those, those occur. Oh, can I, can I go back one? I missed something on my notes. I wanted to talk to you guys about something on what's not a meeting. So something that does come up, and I think that Director Morris may have brought, brought this up with the commission when you guys were at the conference together, is, you know, there are, there are times that members of the commission might be having lunch in the patio at La Borgata or something like that. You know, it's in a very public space, and you're there for kinship and a friendly lunch exchange. And what I would say about that is, is that's not a Brown Act meeting. You know, you're not required to notice that and invite the public to that. However, it's very difficult to have a group, you know, a quorum of the commission together and not have a perception that you're discussing the business of the commission, or inadvertently veer off into that business. So, you know, I would never say to the commission that you're precluded from gathering in that sort of social setting. I would just ask that you're always mindful of your role in the community as a commissioner, and that the perception that others in the public may have when they see a group of commissioners gathering and gathering in that type of setting. Serial meetings, so serial meetings are, are, are easy to fall into. This is, the, the issues with serial meetings is the process of how they are conducted. It deprives the public of their ability to see and participate in the business of the commission. There's two types of serial meetings that I think kind of just you can categorize to get an easy understanding of what I'm talking about when I say serial meetings. One is like a daisy chain meeting. So Commissioner A talks to Commissioner B and the Commissioner B talks to Commissioner C and Commissioner C talks to Commissioner D. Well, you haven't had four people all sitting in a room together talking about the commission's business, but you've had a meeting because the information was shared amongst four people and it wasn't public, it wasn't noticed, and the public didn't see what your deliberations were. The other type of serial meeting is like a hub and a spoke type of meeting. And that one is also very easy to inadvertently fall into. And that's where, you know, Commissioner A talks to Commissioner B, Commissioner A talks to Commissioner C, Commissioner A talks to Commissioner D, or the Assistant City Attorney talks to Commissioner A, B, C, and D, all about the same thing that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and shares the thoughts from the other commissioners. So what you have to be mindful of is there will be situations where an applicant or a member of the community will want to talk to you about an item that's going to come before the planning commission. And for the spoken hub situation, that's one that I think you have to be really mindful that you initiate that meeting with a statement of anything that I say to you is not to be shared with other commissioners. Even better, don't share your opinions. You know, if you're in that sort of meeting, it's okay to receive information from a member of the community or, or an applicant that has a project that's coming before the commission. And the best practice is to receive the information, thank the person for the information, ask questions, and then when you come to the public meeting, discuss your thoughts about that, disclose the information you received. If it's not information that you've already received in the staff report so that it can be part of that public hearing and open for a public comment and, and open to the rest of your commissioners to, to, to deliberate about. So. There's, I did a slide here with some examples of serial meetings and how they can happen amongst commissioners. And, and that's like, you know, the, the, the places where it's easy for it to happen is that, you know, two or three commissioners talk and, and that's okay. That's not a, that's not a meeting. But then one of the three goes and talks to someone else and shares the discussion that was had amongst the other three. The, the other one that's really easy to do inadvertently is email. You know, the, the reply all button is the enemy of the Brown Act. So if you're ever communicating with other commissioners, I would just say be very careful about how that's done, be very careful about copying commissioners on emails that you send, and also be careful about forwarding information you received to other commissioners because that could create this daisy chain effect, which is a Brown Act violation. Okay, we already talked about that one. So what the exceptions to serial meetings are, you know, you can have individual conversations with staff as long as we're not sharing your opinions with other commissioners. And then you can also use social media to communicate with the public as long as other commissioners aren't directly commenting. So the issue with social media is it's really good to kind of push one statement out, but when you start getting into discussions back and forth with, with each other on social media or text messaging and that sort of thing, that's where problems are created. And so, and that's even like if someone likes your post or likes to put an emoji on your post, that's considered a, a communication that could create a serial meeting. So just the general rules, which I think most of you probably understand of the Brown, Brown Act is that the meeting has to be in a public space. The agenda has to be prepared and posted in advance. For a regular meeting, it has to be posted publicly 72 hours in advance of the meeting. For a special meeting, it has to be posted 24 hours in advance. The, the general, you know, purpose of the open meeting is for you to openly deliberate and make decisions. It provides the public an opportunity to comment on agenda, engendized items and also items that aren't currently engendized to, to bring those to your attention. And then all the records related to the meeting, that's the staff reports, the agenda, the recording of the meeting, those are all public records that are made available to the public. An important thing to keep in mind is information that's relied upon during the public hearing, whether or not it's a part of the staff report, is a public record. So if you have met with an applicant that has provided you with additional information that's not on the staff report and you're at all relying upon that in your deliberation and decision making, it's best practice to disclose all of that information during the public hearing so that we are being transparent and everyone understands what we've relied upon to deliberate and make the decision. I also think that it's best practice, although it's not required, that if you have met with an applicant outside of the meeting to disclose that you've had that meeting and to disclose whether or not you were provided with any additional information that's not included in the staff report.
Our residents there, and you have conversations with them about the project. Should that be disclosed as well?
So any information you receive that is not already included in the public record, so essentially the staff report, if it is information that you've relied upon in making your decision or in your deliberations, I would encourage you to disclose that during the public hearing.
And then to what extent? I mean, is it just, I spoke to other merchants located there or is it names and how detailed?
I think so, and we can talk about specifics if you have specific questions. But I think the best thing, the, the rule of thumb that I would go by is enough information that if a member of the public was here to participate in the hearing, enough information that they would be able to respond to what you were told. You know, if they had different information or they had questions about that information. The idea is to make sure that the public has access to the same information that the commission has access to and that they're able to, you know, agree with it, refute it, you know, provide additional context, you know. So I, that would kind of be my rule of thumb is like enough that people would be able to receive that information and respond to it publicly if they needed to.
So I guess at the end of the day, if there's something that may, might sway your vote one way or another, contact you and say, how deep into the weeds do I get?
Yeah, that would be appropriate, yes.
Yeah, and so just touching upon that, like if, if someone from the, like suppose we have a, a project of course, like, you know, hypothetically, the green tea project, right? And if there's like the, the president of the green tea committee asks you to come and meet with the group, you're probably going to learn things in that session with, with those reps that you wouldn't. That will go into your vote or to your, to your deliberate, you know, to, to your thinking about the item. Should that be, how, how do you handle something like that where, where you know you're going to this meeting and you're going to receive information? Do you give the information that you received at the meeting, if any, to staff or do you just disclose it?
So what I would do is when you're preparing, when you're reviewing the agenda and you're reading the staff reports, if there's notes or thoughts or information you have that came from that external source that are not included in the staff report and that's something that you're relying upon in your decision, I would verbally state that on the record during the public hearing. You could prepare something in writing and send it to the director ahead of time. But you know, it's like with the timing of the agenda and things like that, I, I'm not sure how practical that option is. But the other thing that I would put out there for consideration is, by all means, I think your role and the expectation of the city council is that the commissioners are out there kind of hearing from the community and getting input from the community. But when attending like these large meetings or things like that, you know, you also have the option of inviting those members of the community to come to the public hearing and provide input there as well as reach out to staff and provide their input to staff so that we can include it in the staff report and, and it does become part of the public hearing record, takes some of that burden off of you, you know, from being like the conduit that has to bring it up during the public hearing.
Okay, so just a follow-up to that, like suppose you in the hypothetical were to invite another commissioner because it's in his district to come with you to that. How, is that proper?
Yeah, so remember the meeting, a meeting is a quorum of the commission. So if two commissioners go to a community meeting and participate or get the information in that way, that's okay for the two of you to be there together.
So tonight, because we have, we have many of the green tea members out here, just to state, thank you, thank you Commissioner, is we, you know, we had several members of the community and also of that green tea group out here. And so just stating on the record because myself and Commissioner Aberdeen went and met with that group, it's just to outright say, hey, listen, met with the group, just listened, and that's essentially what we did is just listen to the information that was provided, didn't provide any commentary during the meeting. And so just to get that out there for the public to know, hey, a member of the commission met with the group, so I'm stating that on the record, so there's no issue. So is that, is that kind of along the same lines we're discussing here?
Yes. So in, in, in addition to having a transparent and public process, there are certain hearings that the commission will have that are quasi judicial hearings. And under the law, we're required to afford due process to the, the project applicant. And so under those circumstances, like if the community was providing you with specific information, like I said, that wasn't in the staff report that you're relying upon, we really need to have a clear record of that. And so, or not, you know, I think if you had a meeting and they, you know, there's lots of times that I think applicants will ask to meet with commissioners and they're really not providing you anything additional to what's in the staff report. So you could, you know, it's very likely and probably more often than not that the statement is, I, I met with the applicant, you know, they didn't, they didn't provide me any additional information from what was provided in the staff report. And, you know, they just asked me if I had any questions about the project. You know, that's a simple disclosure that I think keeps us out of hot, hot water with the Brown Act and, and kind of is just putting everything out there for the public so that we are reinforcing that public trust in government, you know, that there's not these secret caucuses or meetings happening that, you know, someone from the Chronicle has to go out and investigate, do an investigative report on, so.
So I have just two questions. One is the timing of your reporting and it's tied to my second question, which is, say you're at a meeting with the community and they, the information that you received in that meeting is brought up in the public forum. It's not on the agenda, but the meeting is presented to the public, or the, not the meeting, the information's presented to the public. Are disclosed about that meeting at that point?
I, I think that, you know, I would leave that up to the commissioners' individual comfort. I don't think there's a bright line rule on that. I always think it's better to disclose more than less, you know, under the, the theory of clean hands, you know, if you've put everything out there, no one could really say that you participated in anything untoward, you know, related to, to the project. But I mean, that could be very simple. I attended the meeting and what the information I received is the same that was brought to the commission tonight. So, you know, or I think under those circumstances, if it's all a part of the record already, you know, if, if you didn't feel like you needed to speak up, I, I don't think we'd have a, any sort of violation related to public hearings.
So then the, the timing of the disclosure, should it happen at the beginning of the item, end of the item, when, or is there a specific time that we think that?
So currently we don't have a, a, a kind of spot on our agenda for that. I'm working with Director Morris, you know, about ideas of the best way to kind of create opportunities for commissioners to make those sorts of disclosures and also related to potential conflicts of interest. So right now, I think at the beginning of the item is always healthy and safe, you know, and that's kind of putting it out there for everyone. But as long as it's just part of the, the record during that item on the agenda, I'm comfortable with that and I feel that we've met our legal obligations related to the, to the Brown Act.
Can just work, Dorothy?
I'm, I'm way okay in understanding the, our interactions together and the way that we speak to each other. And I agree with what you said about council. We want to be a part of the public. We want to hear public opinion and that to me, that's the trickiest part for me. How do I, how do I make sure that, you know, all of that information from talking to my neighbors and, and how that's navigated with, with the public? Because I agree, it's a hundred percent my number one most important thing to do to discuss this with as many people involved as possible. So that's, that's still a tricky one for me.
Yeah, so what I would suggest is, you know, continue doing all of those things. And if you're receiving information that isn't part of what's discussed in the public meeting, you know, jot down your notes and, and share it and share that information you received. You know, I think it's, it is very well and clear established policy by the city council that they desire the commissioners to be, you know, the receivers of that input from the public. So just the best we can share it. And, you know, and this is really like, we do our best to comply to the best of our ability. There is no expectation for you to come in on the record and, and, you know, verbatim recall every conversation you had when you ran into someone at the grocery store. So I don't want to over, overstate the requirement, but if it's something that you're relying upon during the deliberation, that's important to get into the public record.
That's a perfect segue into what I was going to say is going with what Commissioner Vargas said, I was with him.
My speaker's on actually.
Oh. You're next.
Gotcha.
Is that I was with him and I was, well, to be honest, a little self-conscious that I was talking too loudly when I was talking, I completely forgot to say that I had met with the Green Tree liaisons. But in my past experience, it was at the end, it was at the end, it, it, the chair would, or somebody would ask if there was ex parte. And so I think I was waiting for ex parte communication and that's when I would have said it. And so going.
If I may, so that is appropriate. That is proper for us to do?
Oh.
So we, we would want to know, especially when we're voting, I think it's proper to, so like I'll, I'll, we'll, the way I've seen it done before is that when we're going to vote on the item, the chair would say, now's the time to disclose any ex parte meetings so that everyone is aware coming into the item.
That was going to be my next question, is that, is that only really done when we vote on something or is it, is it done when we receive reports? I guess it sounds like it should be done all the time.
So creating the, the, the very clear public record and information relied upon is especially important when we have a public hearing where the applicant's entitled to due process. Tonight, you know, you were taking comments on a draft EIR. I'm comfortable with the way that the commission handled that. I think all of you shared input and information you'd received from the, the community. which is exactly, you know, the appropriate way to handle the item this evening. What I can say is that Director Morris and I, you know, will work with Chair Klein and kind of making sure that we're navigating this appropriately and kind of creating that space for, for everyone to be able to, to provide that sort of input during the meetings. And so, you know, that's always something that we, we can work on and create that space and make it a little bit easier and, and have it kind of in the same slot for each item so that you guys get comfortable with, with the appropriate time to do that.
So we have Commissioner Vargas, Russell.
Yes, yeah, so thank you for clarifying that because I think being new to this role and, and, you know, I got a sense that being appointed to this position, then individuals seek you out, right? For support, for input, for whatever. And so with the Green Tree project, I think with what Commissioner Rudy had stated is, you know, receiving the information and at what point do we disclose that information? You know, I, I find myself in the, in the future, for example, if I get a certain director from Boys and Girls Club who's reaching out because I'm District Three representative, right? What do I do with that? Because I know, you know, who, who do I go to with that information? Who do I talk to about that information? And in reading this, maybe not necessarily my fellow commissioners, but coming here or going to Director Morris instead. So thank you for the clarity.
You know, one thing that I was asking, we're talking about the, the idea that we would want to have certain commissioners that would be a liaison to certain groups, especially where there's a thing in your district that, where you would be expected to be on top of, where your council members probably relying on, on your advice and where the community is seeking you out. Then if, in my view, it would only be fair for the commission to hear about, and to put you in a liaison role with that group to try to provide a, a connection to the community and to provide authentic opportunities for feedback from the community. And I, it's in our bylaws to be able to have a role like that and have commissioners be appointed to, to, to be able to fill that role. So I, I think, you know, what I take from this is that we're developing how that's going to flow. We're still, we haven't done it in the past. We're, but I, I, I think that I, you know, for, if, if my vote is to have, we're not voting on anything and it's just, you know, a term of speech. But I, I, I would say it'd be great to have a, a place on the agenda during Commissioner report. You know, we, we have Commissioner comments at, at the end of the meeting that we haven't really made use of in, in a way that's, that, that provides community input and feedback on the regular. So that, that's, you know, we, we could try that out maybe and make sure that Andrea approves the mechanism in which we do that.
Yeah, so I, I do, and, and actually that's on here is exceptions of when you can go off of kind of the specific agenda items and that is for Commissioner comments. So if there's someone that has, you know, a particular liaison that they're doing with a, a part of the community, that's appropriate for them to provide general reports during Commissioner comments. But kind of to your point, Chair Klein, the council and the commissions are having a joint meeting this summer. And the hope is to start to solidify some of those, the policy direction from the council and, and get better direction on the role of the commissions. And in that process, we are taking a look at the commissioner on policies and procedures or the planning commission policies and procedures. And so I think this is an ongoing discussion where we will get input from the commission and the council about how best to create the most kind of fluid and open flow of information between community, commissions and city council and try to make sure that we're kind of all serving our highest purpose in, in our respective roles. And so that's, I, I think that's very much on everybody's, the forefront of everybody's mind and something that's in the works. So more to come on that. I, that's not, not something that I am prepared to go into detail tonight because we are still kind of formulating and, and still need to have more discussion with the council and the commissions on, on the exact direction for that.
Yeah, I think this probably, so but to put a final point on it. Commissioner Vargas, to your concern about coming to the commission with, with questions about that, you know, I, I think if, if there's something in your community, in, in your specific district and you, you want to see it represented as, as a commissioner, and it's in our subject matter jurisdiction, I want to hear about it. And I'd, I'd love to hear, you know, you could talk to me about like, hey, whether we can think of ideas to amplify the issue. Because for me, I know that there are things in my district that, you know, at the Nuttree Airport, for instance, and things happen at the Nuttree Airport as, as a land, a matter of land use that we have little connection to. But it would be maybe interesting to devote five minutes to hearing more about that in, in a commissioner report. I think that'd be proper. And if, but if that's something that we're not allowed to do, then I, it's news to me. But I, I'd love to hear more about how we can, you know, put the, the commission and our subject matter and our abilities to better use.
So I think it is appropriate to make general comments during Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting. However, I think if we're going into specific, a little more detailed reports, my preference would be to, you know, work through a mechanism to agendize that so that the public knows that that's going to happen. So, but you know, I think general bits and pieces that you're picking up from the community or things that you would like to ask staff to bring back on an agenda are appropriate to, to bring up during the Commissioner comments.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And I think we just have to get a better understanding of how the liaison process works. Hopefully it doesn't take until the summertime. So we, we, you know, that's, our terms are limited. So at least my term is, I know everyone else probably has longer terms and. You're welcome. Good thinking, Council.
Commissioner Wilkerson.
Just, I see that we're on slide nine of 23.
Yes.
And so I think some of these questions could be answered as we continue to go through. So I'd like to try and bring us back on topic and allow your report to finish.
Thank you. I don't want you guys to be falling asleep at the end when I get to the, to the conflict of interest stuff, right? So, so as you can see here, you know, the general rule is we are only allowed to talk, talk about items that are agendized. There are exceptions, you know, brief announcements, brief reports on Commissioner comments. We can do some brief responses to comments made by members of the public. We're able to ask clarifying questions of staff and/or other commissioners. You're able to direct staff to bring something back on an agenda. You know, you can bring it up in enough detail to say, I would like this to come back as an agendized item so we can have a more in-depth discussion. And then you can also direct staff to, hey, you know, generally, I want, for instance, I want you to go get more information about land use at the airport and bring it back to the commission. You can make a, a general statement like that. So just talking about public participation, you know, the, as you guys have already experienced, you know, they can comment, the public can comment on any item that's on the agenda. They can come, comment during business floor on anything that is within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. And then you guys are aware of the time limits that we impose from the public. So there's a couple things that I want to talk about, you know, the implications when we violate the Brown Act. Before I move on to, to the next section, which is, I guess I have one more slide. Let me get to that, the agenda materials. This is just generally, you know, we're going to distribute everything that you receive to the public. It's going to be accessible on the city's website. If you receive any communications from the public, you know, or written responses to, to staff reports, you should send those to staff so that we can make sure that they're properly disseminated to the commission. And if, if possible, you know, are part of what is addressed by staff when they do their presentation. So violations of the Brown Act, you know, the implications of a Brown Act violation is that it can completely invalidate, you know, the commission's actions. So when you're looking at the work of the planning commission, oftentimes the, the schedule and the timing that projects are brought forward to the commission or recommendation of approval or in some cases, approval. It can often be, you know, that timeframe can be like a do or die timeframe for a project. And so the implications is not just, oh, we have to listen to it again or we have to redo the hearing. But you know, sometimes if that hearing and that approval doesn't happen in the timeframe that it needs to happen, the entire project will be infeasible and go away. And you know, and we think of it like, oh, someone building houses or a business. But I mean, it could also be like a large infrastructure project that then becomes financially infeasible for the city because we delayed and didn't, you know, get in on a contract at a bid price that, that, you know, in 60 days, especially in the market we're in right now, we would not be able to afford it. So it's really important that when we're taking the actions, that they're valid, that we don't have to have concern about the commission's actions being invalidated because we violated provision of the Brown Act. The other thing that happens is when the city gets engaged in lawsuits for actions that were improper, many of the laws provide for payment of attorney's fees for the other party. And that can get very, very costly. You know, sometimes the underlying damages for a, a civil action brought against the city is like the least of our worries. You know, the attorney's fees can, can really, really cost a lot of money. So we'd want to avoid that if at all possible. And then there's, there's the potential of criminal prosecution depending on how egregious the act is. And then, you know, you guys know this one, just the possibility of public humiliation and embarrassment. And I know city staff, we try hard to do things in the, in the best way possible, best practices to avoid that for the city ourselves individually. And we also want to, you know, provide good guidance to the commission so that you can avoid something like that. Okay, so now on the conflict of interest, I'm going to move from Brown Act, but I want to, again, you know, if anyone has any questions about this, you can always call my office and I'm happy to talk to you as, about as much as I know. So the other really important body of law, and it is a huge body of law that, you know, pertains to the work you're doing on the commission is the conflict of interest laws. There's three primary sources for that. The Political Reform Act, Government Code Section 1090, which applies to contractual agreements, and common law conflicts and bias. So I'll read you the general statement. Public officials are prohibited from making, participating in, or in any way attempting to use their official position to influence a governmental decision in which they know or have a reason to know that they have a financial interest. So an official has a conflicting financial interest if it is reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a material financial effect distinguishable, distinguishable from its effect on the public generally, on the official, a member of their immediate family, or on a specified interest in any relevant business entity, real property, or income or gift source. So as you can see, it is a mouthful. It is a huge requirement and there is a lot to it. So I want to start with, this is like touching on the general topic. And these are very fact-specific analysis that come up. If you ever have a question about whether or not you have a conflict of interest, I want you to just feel completely, you know, open to contacting Erin, or sorry, Director Morris, contacting myself so that we could provide you support for this, this evaluation of a conflict. It's a very detailed analysis in a lot of situations. It's very fact-specific and we'll be able to ask the right questions. These are complicated issues to navigate on your own. So, you know, when you get the commission agenda, the, the best tip or trick that I could give you is as you're looking at each item, ask yourself, do I potentially have any interest in the outcome of this item? And that could be financial interest, it could be a personal interest, it could be just a general bias because of where you live in the community or people that you're related to that work in a certain part or sector of the community. So these are questions that when you get the agenda, I feel like at the top of each item, the first question you should ask is, do I have a conflict, a potential conflict or perceived conflict or bias on this item? So the Political Reform Act starts at the Government Code Section 8100. And that's mainly relates to financial interests. If you have a financial interest, you're required to recuse yourself from the decision and you can make, you cannot attempt to, to influence the decision in any way. Where do we see conflicts arise and kind of what are the most common scenarios? It's public officials who are realtors, brokers and appraisers. That falls under, I can, I can switch, that falls under usually the, you know, it's a source of income. Public officials that work for another agency, you know, often you'll be making decisions that have input, impacts on other agencies or their business in the city. Public officials that have an interest in a nonprofit entity, that can sometimes be financial interest. And sometimes it's not financial, but it creates an impermissible bias. Business interests, like if you have investments in the city or you have family, you know, a spouse or a dependent child that has investments in a business in the city that's going to be impacted by a decision that's made by the commission. And then the, the income and investments of your spouses and dependent children. So what are the types of financial interests? It's like a real property interest that equal to or greater than $2,000. So that's your home, that's any other buildings or properties that you own in the city. If you have anything that's a source of income that's greater than $500 in the past 12 months. So in, in, in some circumstances, that can even include commissions that you've earned. So if there's something that's coming before the commission that could potentially impact your employer or their business in the city, that could create a conflict. Sources of a gift, so if you have someone that's giving you a gift that's more than $500, that could create a, a conflict, a conflict. Do you want me to keep going or are you, okay. Also, there's a interest in a business entity, so that's your investments or holding a management position. Or if you're an officer, director or employee of a business. And then finally, there's personal interest, which is your personal income, your finances, your spouse or your dependent children's income. So the one that can be most, I think arises a lot with approvals that the planning commission does is your interest in real property. So if you're within 500 feet, if your real property is within 500 feet of a, a project that's coming to the commission, there's a presumption that you have a conflict of interest. So the, the rule is, is that you recuse yourself unless you have clear and convincing evidence, which is a very high legal threshold, that the decision will not have a measurable impact on, on the property. If, if you are questioning whether or not you have a conflict of interest on a project application that's within 500 feet of your personal property, please contact me because that's a very high threshold, evidentiary threshold to overcome. that's a very high threshold, evidentiary threshold to overcome. And I want to make sure that if we're doing that, that we have that clear and convincing evidence. Then if you're from 501 to 1,000 feet, several years ago, the legislature decided that they were going to create the, the window, I guess, footage from a project, that then there's a more detailed analysis that, that is done. And we looked at the factors that are listed here and whether or not those factors are impacted by the decision. And if the property is impacted in that way, then there would be a conflict. So again, that's one that if you're in that range, 500 to 1,000 feet, if you could get in touch with Director Morris or myself, and we'll do the evaluation. On the real property conflict of interest, I wanted to point out that the city does have a radius map that we utilize to check when we have projects come forward. So we would try to notify you. That being said, you know, people often have interests in properties that we may not be aware of. And so, you know, we, we're hoping that not only will we be checking, but you'll also be looking at the project address and, and kind of seeing where you are. If you get in a situation where you're not really sure how far away or how close, get that information to us and we can use the GIS mapping and pull it out to the, to the pinpoint, and we'll be able to tell whether or not which category you'd fall into. Okay.
I, I will just briefly say that Andrea is very good about helping out on this, from personal information, from personal experience. I, I will be recusing myself on the North Village Area Plan Two. And I went through this process with Andrea and Melinda and Erin. And it, it's, it's very wise to bring Andrea in early. And, you know, it doesn't feel good recusing yourself, but it's the right thing to do. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And it's, it's our pleasure to be able to, to do that work for, for the commission. In addition to the ownership of real property, you could also have like a leasehold interest in something that could be impacted by a decision that, that's pending before the commission. So the, the factors that you need to look at is, does it increase or decrease, decrease the potential rental value of, of the property that you have a leasehold interest in? Could it actually change the allowable uses on the property that you have an interest in? And that comes into play a lot with like business leases, because sometimes you might have a decision coming before you, like downtown specific plan, where there's going to be something that, you know, was once a permitted use and now is going to turn into a non-comforming use. And so that could affect your leasehold interest. And then the final one is that it could impact the commissioners, your use or enjoyment of the property. So there's going to be some limitation put upon it that would change how you're able to use your lease, leasehold interest. So the process for recusal, and this is kind of what Chair Klein kindly referred to, you know, is if we do identify a conflict of interest, there is a process that, that happens during the public meeting where you identify the interest that causes the conflict, you recuse yourself from discussing or voting on the matter, and you leave the room. The, the thing that kind of falls out of that public part that's viewed by the public is that, you know, in addition to recusing yourself, you can't take any action, you know, you can't talk to other commissioners, or talk to staff, or do other things that are an attempt to influence the decision. So another kind of axiom of conflicts is, you know, not using your position to, to influence any item or direction of staff. And so for a general rule, you're not supposed to communicate with staff from any department or any other city officials about projects in which you might have a financial interest. So for example, if you are opposing a housing project that is within 500 feet of your home because it's going to create like a major thoroughfare through your neighborhood, which you think is going to affect the property value, you couldn't, you're not allowed to use your position as a commissioner to, you know, call up myself or Tyra and say like, oh, this project's terrible, it has, you know, all these problems. And you have a financial interest in that project. And so your only participation in that project is pretty limited as a member of the public. And when you participate as a member of the public in any commentary or input on that project, you have to be very clear that you're participating as a member of the public. And you can only speak as to the impacts to your real property in that setting. There's a couple of exceptions, and I know I'm going long here, so I won't go too much in on this. I don't think anyone on the commission is an architect that's going to be submitting reports to the city, or an engineer. But if I'm wrong, please reach out to me and we can talk about, about what you're allowed to do if, if you fall into that role and intend to submit technical documents to the city. And there's no restrictions on your business partners or employees. If there's an item where you're financially conflicted and, and have to recuse yourself, the other owners of the business or employees are able to participate. So this one I'm going to go over kind of quickly because it doesn't really affect the Planning Commission all too often. That's Government Code Section 1090, and it, it applies to agreements that are entered into by the city. So if, if any public official has a financial interest in a contract that is being made by the city, they're not allowed to vote or participate in the approval of that contract. We don't customarily bring agreements to the Planning Commission for approval, so this one doesn't come up all too often with the commission. So I'm kind of going to go through it quickly. If you have questions about that later, again, don't hesitate to talk to me about it. Finally, there's common law conflicts and bias. So this one is a little more tricky, and I want to get to my notes. So the, the common law doctrine against conflicts of interest is the judicial expression of a public policy against officials acting on things where they have a financial interest. It's been primarily applied to require that officials abstain from things that they have financial interest. But it has kind of also, there's a, a evolution of that common law conflict that kind of bleeds into the idea of a common law bias. And that, that bias may be based on purely non-financial interest. So earlier I talked about due process, and sometimes the commission will be making quasi-judicial decisions to, to which the applicant has a due process right, a legal right to a fair and impartial hearing. And so we have to be mindful to avoid situations where there's a perception, or a perception of a bias, or an actual bias. And so, you know, a, a personal interest or involvement in the outcome of a matter, regardless if you have a financial interest, can lead to that impermissible bias. So again, my tip on that is when you're looking at the agenda, if you see something that you have like a really strong feeling about, that you feel like, you know, you can't be fair and impartial based on, you know, your experience, maybe your business dealings, where you live in the community, but it's not a direct, like you're not earning money from it, but you just have very strong feelings about, I don't know, it could be something like, you know, union labor, or anti-union labor, or something, you know, that you don't feel like you can be fair on a project, or someone might perceive you as being unable to be unbiased on it, then you should refrain from, you should abstain from participating in that item. So when it's, when the courts have established that there is a bias, what can happen is they can require the commission to rehear the matter. And so again, I come back to the, the idea of, you know, that the process sometimes is dependent upon us getting approvals or recommendations to the council for approval on a certain timeline. So we really want to avoid the situation where we're having to rehear something if, if possible. I'm on the last slide, you guys. So sources for conflict of interest advice. The city attorney's office, and you know, there's, we have four attorneys now, so there's always someone there that will help you for Planning Commission items. You know, I'm the attorney assigned to staff of Planning Commission, so I am always open. But if I am not there, you can reach out to the city attorney, Melinda Stewart, or either of my, the other attorney colleagues in the office would be happy to help you, or at least take your question in and get it to me so that I could get your response. The other option is to seek advice from the Fair Political Practice Commission. They have two ways that you can get advice, informal advice and formal advice. I do have to put out there that advice from the city attorney's office or informal advice from the FPPC does not protect you from prosecution, you know, saying, oh, I relied on the city attorney's advice, doesn't provide you with personal protection. However, we do our very best to get it, get it right. And if it's something that we are unsure about, we can assist you on getting formal advice from the FPPC, which will protect you from prosecution for violations on conflict of interest. And then I couldn't end without saying the potential ramifications for a conflict of interest. And again, you know, we could invalidate the commission's decision, and when the commission's making recommendations to the city council, we could actually have impacts on the council decision. There is legal avenues for criminal and civil prosecution for conflict of law violations that could be brought against the city, but could also be brought against commissioners Then with the contracts, if we violate Government Code Section 1090, it makes them void and unenforceable. So it's like we have no agreement whatsoever. Again, it could cause the delay of important projects and/or infrastructure for the city. And then it could also result in the loss of your office as a public official, and in some circumstances, a preclusion from participating in official capacity in the future. So that was a lot of information. And there's, you know, there's so many nuances and much more detail that I could get into. I'm happy to entertain questions now, or I am happy to bring more back later if, if there's an appetite for more detailed discussions about certain things in the future. But again, my thought was to give you guys some general information so that you can spot the issues, and then we'll, we'll, we'll talk about them. And, and that's a collaboration and, and kind of spotting the issues and working through them is the best that we can do to avoid these potential conflicts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. City Attorney Borba.
Assistant City Attorney. That's okay. You can give me a promotion right now. I don't think the training was that good.
Well, I mean, I was so moved by it. My vote matters.
Thank you very much.
Are, are there questions? Or Commissioner Wilkinson, did you have questions?
Good.
No?
Great job.
Okay. Thank you.
I enjoyed all 23 slides.
Yeah, I enjoyed all 23 of them. I'm looking forward to the next one. Any sense of what the next topic may be?
Yes, we're planning on bringing SEQA basics, and the emphasis is on the basics, not the, not the five-hour training or 10-hour training that staff do, but more of us is synced SEQA basics training. That'll be next month.
Thank you. We look forward to it. Director Morris, we'll now turn to you for item number 10, which is the status report on development and major projects.
Thank you very much, Chair Klein. I'm going to cover the Building Department highlights for the month of April. One of them is actually really exciting, so I'll still go quickly, given the hour. We finalized two accessory dwelling units, one multifamily building at Harpers and Townhomes, so eight more units have been brought online through final inspection. 22 single-family homes, one single-family home with an ADU, a couple tenant improvements. The most notable is actually the Rain and Warehouse on Midway Drive. This is a medical device manufacturer that is relocating part of their operations to the city of Vacaville. And we're very, they've had a, they had a three-week plan review from my Building Division, and their permit was ready to issue and pick up at the end of that three weeks. And I just want to, I'm giving props to my building staff. They, they knocked it out of the park. And this is a company that is really investing here in phases, but ultimately bringing very high-quality jobs. And so we're just super excited that their first TI went really well. And so overall, the inspectors, again, I got three of them on a good day, inspected 1,265 things during the month of April. 393 permits were issued, and 307 permits were finalized. So it was a busy April in the Building Division.
Oh my God, those poor people.
And then I believe Senior Planner E. Nalt is going to present the current planning report, followed by Senior Planner Hayes doing the advanced planning report.
Yes, thank you. I'll make this short. In District One, we had a new project that was submitted. It's a design review intended to parcel map request. Granite Expo located over off of Vacaville Parkway and Crocker is looking at building a secondary warehouse building, 70,000 square feet. That is a staff level review project, but that's a notable project that we're looking at. Camping World is adding a small expansion, three cargo bays that they're looking at building onto their existing building. They're located at 5065 Quinn Road. We also received an application for the fields at Alamo Creek. That is a vacant agricultural land that's located just northeast of the farm at Alamo Creek. It's bound by Hawkins Road. And that's 32 acres of land that this proposal is looking towards constructing 223 single-family lots. That is a very large project that would need Planning Commission review and City Council as the eventual decision maker on that one. But there's more to come on that one. We will be working vigorously on that to bring it forward. On District Six, the other notable activity going on is in District Six. We received a plan development application for the South Town Apartments. There is a vacant lot of 9.91 acres in size that's located off of Leisure Town Road and Redstone Parkway. And we received an application to develop 236 units for an apartment project on that site. They're looking at having 84 townhome-style apartments and 152 traditional apartment-style units that would be on 14 buildings. So we're still in the process of reviewing that one. That would be a project that would be before the Planning Commission at some future date. One last notable activity that I wanted to bring ahead for the commission is that we do have 700 Park on Main, which is a subsequent project that we, we received. Originally, that was the East Main District project that was being proposed in that downtown area. They decided to move on to a different builder, and we received the 700 Park on Main project. So we've gone through the process of reviewing the revised project, and staff is looking at potentially making an action on that revised project sometime in June, possibly the first week in June. That's it for current planning.
You know, what was the first, the warehouse item? Can you, where was that?
That's at the corner of Cotting Lane and Crocker Drive. That's right next to the existing Granite Expo that's there now. There's a vacant lot that's directly next to it. So they'd be looking at subdividing that larger property, and on that vacant grass area, we'll be building a 70,000-square-foot warehouse building.
And that's at the staff approval level for warehouses?
That's correct, yes. And our code is written as that industrial projects that don't exceed a certain threshold, I think it's 100,000 square feet, are staff-level projects.
I'm asking because this is, like, this is an issue that I'm hearing from people about warehouses. Seems like there's a lot of them in the first district, and so we're getting more warehouses?
That, that's correct. A lot of the district and, a lot of the area in District One is designated for industrial park. And so those are our primaries that are intended to accommodate warehousing, majority of which would be hopeful to be manufacturing, but a lot of that you'll see warehousing distribution or storage within those buildings. So it's all an area that's been pre-designed. And what tends to happen is as builders are looking at developing the warehouses, because they have prospective tenants, they'll come in, find the lots, and... in, find the lots, and submit projects to the city for the development of those larger warehouses.
And what's that code section that provides that authority?
Within that particular section, probably be within, right now, as the code is written, there are policy plans that provide that overarching guidance for what can be developed and what cannot be developed. Obviously, those policy plans will be removed once the most recent code that has been adopted goes into effect, which we're looking at possibly middle of July, so when that would be effective. But projects that are submitted before that middle of July date would be subject to review and the procedures that are in place currently right now.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there's no further questions for Albert, I'm going to give you a very brief overview of what advanced planning has been up to. First and foremost, I just want to revisit that you've met Edward Lincoln. He is now working with me on all of our current, the current advanced planning projects. And staff continues to work with our consultant group on our housing element, safety element, and environmental justice elements. We are scheduled to receive the administrative draft of the housing element at the beginning of next month. That is something that staff will be reviewing for about a month. In August, we will be coming back to the planning commission and to the council to do a presentation of the draft housing element prior to submitting it to HCD for their first review. So typically, HCD, that's the California Department of Housing Community Development, they review it twice before they'll certify the actual document. Following the submittal of the housing element to HCD at the end of August, we will also be doing some work on our environmental justice elements. As part of this, we will be hosting a workshop in either late June or early July, in which we will educate the public, the nonprofits, the, anyone who's involved in really wanting what's best for their community from very different aspects, whether it be dealing with health issues, whether it be inequity issues, things of that nature. Everyone will be invited, and we would be holding those meetings somewhere, again, sometime in late June, early July. See, following the safety, sorry, following the environmental justice elements, sometime this fall, we will be back in front of the planning commission and eventually city council with the draft safety elements. Now, for all of you lucky people who are going to be on our housing elements steering committee, I will review why we are doing all three documents simultaneously. There is a reason. The easiest way for me to explain this is to remind everyone that these are elements of the general plan, and therefore they must be internally consistent with one another. The one way to do that is to prepare them concurrently. So that is all I have to share with you tonight.
Thank you, Tyra. Okay. Director Morris?
Thank you, Chair Klein. I have a brief report for this evening on topic of council actions pertaining to planning commission items. As you all recall, in one great evening, the commission recommended approval of the downtown specific plan, and in two great evenings, the council adopted the downtown specific plan. And on May 10th, I was able to present to the council the first set of projects that city staff wants to undertake to immediately make improvements downtown. Some of those are already underway, the lighting improvements are underway, the additional signs have actually just been ordered by our Public Works Assistant Director, Tim Burke. We're working on a parking app that will note how many spaces are available in our different parking lots visually when you're there, as well as on an app. So lots of exciting things, the council was very supportive, and we are actually moving forward with that, and then also looking at the next set of things that the city can do downtown, to really try to catalyze plan and make the things happen that we want to have happen down there. That's the main one. There's a lot going on. There's some things waiting to council that, like enhanced infrastructure financing district, more to come on that, the Northeast Growth Area, want to take a look at that. And again, I'll bring these back to the commission after I get some council direction on some of these topics, but there's just going on. Tentative schedule for future planning commission items, with the continuance of two items from tonight's agenda, you might have gone. However, they'll be here next month. You've already reviewed the staff report, the materials, though, so that should help you in your preparations. We also have the North Village Area Plan Two coming to you for formal consideration and recommendation to the council. We also should have the urban reserve land inventory for you to review and recommend to the council, and then we'll have our CEQA basics training. All of those items may or may not totally materialize next month, but the goal is, you probably have robust agendas through the summertime and into the fall, so eat a hearty dinner is my recommendation. And then on the announcement side, just trying to keep people apprised of personnel because it really does affect our work. Still looking for a building official. I have some interviews coming up, and I'm feeling a little bit hopeful that maybe someone will accept the offer that I want to hire. I've just actually gotten acceptance on my assistant director position, but I did have someone accept it and walk two days later, so fingers crossed that this individual stays available and wants to come on board in July is going to help a lot with bringing you and the city the kinds of things you would want from a community development department that's high-functioning. And we're currently recruiting for assistant and associate, so we're looking for whatever level we can get from the best candidate possible. We can hire either at entry level or mid-level. And then with the resignation of our planning technician, Jalissa Farias, who you met at the last planning commission meeting, we will need to be finding a new planning technician. So I'm just saying, staffing is very fluid. It's a tough time to find people. I want to just tell your friends, it's a great environment to learn about land use planning and to be very supported by the small team of people you see here, but the quest continues to restaff the department, so please bear with us. And those are all the announcements I had this evening.
It wasn't because of the planning commission.
No, 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 you all were very encouraging. Actually, she's left public service entirely to go into the private sector, not related to planning, so it was more of a specific career move for a specific individual. It was not about, it wasn't about us.
Yeah, tell Mr. Lincoln he's, he should not, you know, don't let it get to him.
We are very encouraging toward Mr. Lincoln, yes.
Yeah. Great guy. Thank you, Director Morris. We'll now turn to item 12, Commissioner's comments. Let's see. Excuse me. Commissioner Vargas.
I have no.
Commissioner Lightfoot.
I'm good.
Vice Chair Fortney.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Rudin.
No comments.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Thank you, staff, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Here, here. With that, we're adjourned to our meeting on June 21st. Good night, Vacaville.